Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Town of Shrewsbury zoning board of appeals public hearing for Monday, June 24th, 2019. Before we get started into the public hearings portion, there's some house cleaning items that we have to take care of administratively. When we do get to the public hearings portion of the meeting, I will read the appeal into the minutes. The advocate can come to the table, tell us what they want, why they want it. If you are here for a variance, it is incumbent upon you to give us a hardship that would give us a reason for giving the variance. The hardship has to deal with the land, shape-size topography of your underlying land. If you're here for a special permit, the burden is not as high. You need to tell us that the new conditions can't be more intense than the existing conditions. That being said, we'll get to the first portion. A few bills. I have a $324 bill for the Worcester Telegraph and Gazette for the April meeting and $9.92 for WB Mason for office advice. Can I get a motion?
Move through those bills.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Your signature is in fact.
We also have minutes for April, May, and June. Did everyone have a chance to review and did anyone have any corrections, comments? Goodbye me. Can I get a motion?
Move to a floor.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Just to let people know, one member is missing right now. He did not tell us that he wasn't going to be here. So we are still expecting him to show up, but when we start the hearings, we can sit with a four-member board. The thing to keep in mind, you have the option of continuing the hearing until we have a full board. The reason you may want to do that is if you're here for a variance, and you normally would take two no votes to deny the appeal, either for a variance or a special permit. On a four-member board, it only takes one no vote to deny the appeal. So because of that, until and unless he gets here, we will give you the option of continuing until the next meeting. The first hearing is continued from the April 29th meeting, 274-290 South Street. Thai &amp; I Corporation looking for a special permit for Section 4, Table 1, for a takeout window and associated seating.
Do I move this? No need to move it? Okay. Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity. My name is Achara Wade, and I am the owner of Thai &amp; I Restaurant that recently opened at 274 South Street. And I'm here to request an approval for operating a takeout window and additional outside seating. We took over a place that had long been a coffee shop and an ice cream place. So many families, you know, in this town and the surrounding towns had come to the location, and they remembered fondly that, you know, they would visit with their family, with their children, and would sit outside and have ice cream. So that's just something that people here enjoy, you know, for the summer because it's very short. So with that, although it's a Thai restaurant, we now offer ice cream also. And having that additional seating for people to enjoy with the family, the nice weather, I think it would help our business because the space is very, very small. It's, the inside is very small. Having outside seating would help, and so the plan that I submitted actually was identical to the plan originally submitted by the previous owner. So I'm hoping to be able to do the takeout window in the summertime. Yes.
And what are your hours?
Daily from 11:00 to 9:00, 11:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m.
Okay. And you stop serving everything at 9:00 p.m.?
Correct, yes.
Is that consistent with what was that?
I believe the hours, we didn't have a condition on hours for the previous one.
And it's on the, okay. Any questions?
How many seats approximately outside do you have? Are you looking to have?
I believe the plan was about 20, so about five tables. Yes.
Okay. Anyone have any questions, comments? Nope? Okay. There will be no further questions or comments. We'll take it under advisement. You'll be notified of our decision.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next continued hearing is One Applewood Circle, Nicholas and Sonia Katsopoulos, special permit to construct a 27-by-30 in-law addition and a variance to construct an in-law apartment 1.2 feet from the side property line. You have the option of, obviously as I said, to continue to the next meeting. Or if you continue and there is a no vote, that would deny the appeal. So it's your fault. Okay.
I think at first, first of all, thanks for allowing us to be here. My name is Steve Fleishman. I'm the architect working on the project, and I'm here actually on behalf of Tom Peters from Midstate Remodeling, who represented the client last time. Tom unfortunately couldn't be here, and I asked if I could fill in. First thing I wanted to ask was, there was some revisions to the plan, so the description that you did provide is...
I have to read what the advertised...
Right, and that's what I assumed that was for that purpose, but I just wanted to confirm that you did receive. Tom said he dropped off the revised plans.
Yes.
Make sure everybody had those. So I guess, from our perspective, we'd like to present this, see if the feeling from the board leans more in favor, in the sense...
I just got one other issue before you go any further.
Sure.
Mr. Armenti did not sit in on the other hearing.
Yes, that is a problem.
So under the Mullins Law, he did watch the tape. He was up to speed on it, and I just need you to sign to acknowledge that's okay.
Sure.
Yeah. You're okay with him sitting on there? Yeah. Just write this down. Thank you. So tell us about the changes.
The changes, Mr. Peters had relayed back to me some of the suggestions from the board, and in an effort to increase the amount of setback, we moved the stair, as suggested, into the existing structure, which allowed us to reduce the width of the overall structure on the street face, therefore increasing the amount of setback that was still left. So I think we were at a little over, what was the description? 1.2 feet. We're at 6.8 feet now to that setback. And we pushed it back on the site as far as we could to still provide access into the existing garage, one bay of the existing garage.
And the stairs were moved to the other side?
They were moved to the inside of the existing garage. Yes, so basically a 27 or 28-foot outside dimension now just slid over the width of the stairs, and those stairs went into the interior of the existing garage.
You can't, you have to leave it open. It's got to be open. Yeah? It's the sunshine, you can't have it shut door.
Yeah, so the front face now is 24-foot, the minimum for a two-car garage.
Okay.
And then 30-foot deep is originally was proposed.
Okay.
But we were able to slide it over and back to increase that setback.
So the setback is now 6.8?
6.8 feet.
And that is really the big issue. Okay, yeah. Any comments from up here? Questions? Anyone? And the, everything else is pretty much the same as the plan was presented?
Yes, yes. It still has a deck off the rear, still same spaces on the inside as originally presented.
Any one in attendance wish to be heard on this matter? Okay, there will be no further questions or comments. We'll take it under advisement. You'll be notified of our decision.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wait, but Crescent wasn't continued, correct?
So no, Crescent Street was withdrawn and then reapplied.
Reapplied, and then we waived.
Waived the reappearance.
Yeah. Okay, so that's a new hearing. But is that one here?
Yeah, it is.
Okay. So our first new hearing is to hear the appeal of David Meter, 67 Bumblebee Circle, Shrewsbury, Mass. for a special permit and variance to the Town of Shrewsbury zoning bylaw under Section 6, Table 1, for an in-law apartment, and Section 7, Table 2, for an addition 36.8 feet from the rear property line. On the property located at 278 Prospect Street in the Residence B1 District, the subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessors Tax Plate 11, plot 168, 000. Welcome, please state your names for the record.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Meter for DM Custard Building. Your name?
David Meter.
Okay.
First, I just wanted to give you, I had been speaking to Chris McGoldrick, oh, speaking with you, and we have the new survey that was requested.
Okay.
So none of you have that yet?
No.
And the setback amounts have changed because of a...
Which way?
Existing nonconforming structure that's already there. So, Chris, you had said I need to...
Yep, so just to explain, so if you remember the screen porch, that's an existing structure.
Yep.
And on the previously supplied plan, they showed the distance of the proposed foundation, the rear lot line. I requested that they include the screen porch in that relief. It's probably nonconforming and potentially grandfathered, but it's clear that it's a...
It's still part of the, yeah, but it doesn't change the setbacks as requested?
No, it does not.
Okay. So tell us a little bit what you're doing.
Right. We're just, we're looking to construct an in-law apartment. So that's, the special permit is being requested to construct the in-law apartment off the rear of the existing home. It is, what is it?
16 by 32.
16 by 32. And it will run parallel to the porch. This, at the time we applied, we didn't realize that it was a nonconforming porch. We found that out later after we looked for it to see if it was ever permitted. It's been there for over, as long as they did an aerial view, which was almost 20 years ago, so...
Do you have any plans to show us what you're doing?
I only have one copy.
Once I get them, I have to keep them.
That's okay.
Okay.
Those are the ones that were submitted with the building permit application. So the special permit is for the in-law apartment, residentially zoned. The homeowner, Peter Welland, is here too. His in-laws want to occupy the space. And the variance request is requested to allow so that the addition runs parallel with the existing nonconforming porch. Which the addition only is 36.8 feet, as opposed to 40 from the rear, but then the porch...
Right, so you're looking for about 4 feet of relief.
Yeah.
Okay.
Right.
Yeah. Two want to take a look at that.
Right, so it's the 36.8 feet from the rear property boundary. So it's the special permit for the in-law and then the variance for the rear yard setback.
Now, was that for the proposed foundation, was that a deck or something at one time, or was that just open space?
So I believe it's open space.
Yeah. So we're really looking just for rear yard setback?
Yes.
For an in-law apartment, correct.
Yeah, the in-law apartment's a special permit. And you were told the in-law apartment has to be used, has to be by a blood relative.
Yes.
When you sell the property, it can't be sold as a two-family. The permit will expire for that. And whoever you sell to would then have to come back to the board if they want to use it as an in-law apartment. Anyone, any comments, questions? You're good. Okay. Anyone in attendance wish to be heard on this? Okay, there will be no further comments or questions. We'll take it under advisement. You'll be notified of our decision.
Okay.
Thank you. Our next hearing is to hear the appeal of Anisilio Gomez, I believe. Sorry if I mispronounced it. 250 South Quinn-Sigman Avenue, Shrewsbury, Mass. for a special permit to the Town of Shrewsbury zoning bylaw under Section 4-B to construct an addition on an existing nonconforming single-family dwelling on property located in 250 South Quinn-Sigman Ave. in a Residence B2 District. The special premise, the subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessors Tax Plate 45, plot 088, 000, and 089, 000.
Yes, sir, thanks for...
Welcome. Please state your name for the record, please.
Yeah, Anisilio Gomez, and I'm the owner of 250 South Quinn-Sigman Avenue, Shrewsbury.
Okay, so just tell us what you're doing.
Okay. I'm putting an addition to the left side of the house, and then when I did all the measurements and everything, even though the addition I'm doing, it's staying with the variance, which is 10 feet 3 inches from that side. My old house, unfortunately, one section of the house is only 9 foot 7. So we found that, and then basically they told me that I had to ask for a special permit from you guys in order for me to be available to get the addition going.
It's a special permit, yeah. Wait, is this under, it's the increasing nonconformity?
Correct.
Right. Okay. So the, it's a side yard setback?
Yeah, the Wesley...
Yeah. Okay. Do you have any plans for the addition?
Yes, I submit...
You have a, is there a plan? Okay.
Yes, because I have, I have...
Bring that, yeah.
They have a plan.
Yeah, that I have.
We'd like to see actually what...
Of what you're building. Do you have like elevations and...
That should be included in the...
Yeah, you have a second copy of that.
Do I have a second copy of that?
Yeah, okay.
This is not a stamp yet. The architect's working that.
Okay.
We're going to approve it for you guys, but this is what's getting on the other side.
Can I keep this or...
Oh, yeah, you can keep that, you know. And then it's not a, that basically has part of the everything, and once you click it, I just got this and this one, what the existing is, you know, and the new addition that's going to happen in there. And that's a structural, and then it has the framing plant, and they also have a 3D upfront of the...
Yeah, I want to see the addition.
So what's, you show us where the addition is on this here? Is this it right here?
This is the addition. The part that I'm not too far from the property line is on the whole part of the house, which is 9 foot 7.
And that's...
This, yeah, this one I got out with the compliances.
Okay.
We're keeping it at 10 foot 3, 10 foot plus.
So the addition is in compliance?
Correct.
Right.
Yeah, so the addition is in compliance with the setback.
So what's the change that's causing the special permit?
So it's an alteration of an existing nonconforming structure, so...
And that's...
So that's under the, so if you remember, we did have that interpretation from Steve Meraus.
Yeah, I know, but I always thought that meant if you were increasing the nonconformity on a particular setback, not for the entire structure. That's my question. I, that's, I think that we need some clarity on that. Not that it would affect you at this point, but I think we need clarity on that from Steve, because to me, the interpretation was that the special permit would be on if you were encroaching...
The setback.
Right, if this addition was encroaching into the setback, increasing the nonconformity, but...
It's still the same.
Right. But the setback hasn't changed. So what is, what's the special permit for?
Right, so...
Yeah, I think we definitely need...
So it may be...
Because that wasn't how I was interpreting his memo.
Right, so it may be between the memo and the language in our specific bylaw, which is the Section 4-B, which is the, it just says, you know, upon issuance of a special permit, a nonconforming structure may be altered.
Right.
So that may be a...
See, I think that should be, again, unless, if he turns down, says something different, he's not increasing the nonconformity. So unless, my understanding would be that, that was how I read the memo. You know, if you're...
Nothing changed.
It's almost like it's nothing changed, you know, the setbacks. What if, you know, so I'm not sure. Okay. That's our...
You can have that.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Do you guys want to take a look at this?
The new addition is in compliance.
Well, yeah, because they don't want to hold me up.
Why, yeah?
But to me, this would be like the second floor.
Why? Nothing changed.
There's nothing, do you guys have any questions? No? You have any? Okay. Anyone in attendance wish to be heard on this? There will be no further questions or comments. We'll take another advisement. You'll be notified of our decision. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time.
And if that is the case, if I'm wrong, which it could very well be because I'm not an attorney, then I would treat these the way we treat the second floor additions, which is like de facto, you know, we have to have them come in for the special permit, but I don't care. You know what I mean? It's just like, not that that's your problem, but...
Right.
Yeah. This is not going to fit. I'll leave that to you people who have experience with these kinds of things. Our next hearing is to hear the appeal of Greg Gekas, but we're missing a member who was supposed to be here. I'm just going to read it into the minutes just to continue it because I have to recuse myself. To hear the appeal of Gregory Dean Gekas, 7 Shady Lane Ave., Shrewsbury, Mass. for modification to the special permit granted April 2018 to remove and replace a nonconforming single-family dwelling under Section 4-B located at 7 Shady Lane, the Residence B1 District. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessors Tax Plate 27, plot 219, 000. I need to recuse myself from this because I live within the 300 feet, you know, 300 feet of it.
So we open the hearing, or we can continue?
Well, we have to open it to continue, right?
Yes.
I believe it's, yeah, so...
Ask questions on this or...
No, because we only have a three-person board. But I would give the option of, I don't know, Peter hasn't responded, has to go be certain, but if you want to wait till the end of the meeting and see if Peter shows up.
We could do that.
You can do that?
We could leave the hearing open.
Yeah. I hope.
So what's the pleasure of the board? Do you want to continue this to another time and date, or we can leave it open until we see if Peter comes at the, by the end of the meeting?
Well, that makes sense. Leave it open?
All right, so we'll leave it open until the end of the meeting. It's Peter comes in, and we'll hear him if he does show up. Okay?
Do you want to give a presentation and discuss kind of the project or...
Why don't we just wait until if Peter shows up, and then we can move forward then?
Okay.
All right? So we're going to continue.
Okay.
We're going to wait and see if the other member shows up.
Our next 6:30 hearing is to hear the appeal of Mitchell Differential, Inc., 384 Hartford Turnpike, Shrewsbury, Mass. for a special permit to the Town of Shrewsbury zoning bylaw under Section 6, Table 1, to operate a garage and repair shop upon property located at 384 Hartford Turnpike in the commercial, business, and rural districts. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessors Tax Plate 54, plot 003, 000. And I believe this is being continued as well? Yes, originally it was, it wasn't, and then it is again because they didn't want to sit in front of a four-person board.
Yes.
So let us move to continue this, make a motion to continue it to 6:30, the next meeting, which is...
July 29.
July...
29.
29. Can I get a motion?
Motion to continue to the next July meeting?
At 6:30?
July 29 at 6:30 p.m.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Next is to hear the appeal of Anthony Araje, 16 Crescent Street, Shrewsbury, Mass. for a variance under Section 7, Table 2, to allow an addition to be located 6.9 feet from the side property line upon property located at 16 Crescent Street in the Residence B1 District. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessors Tax Plate 27, plot 123, 000. Welcome, please state your names for the record.
Good evening. Jason Arage, Anthony's son.
Sorry for mispronouncing your name.
It's okay, everyone. I'm going to be speaking to my father once again. So the last time we were here, I don't know if you have revised plans. Everyone does have them. So the last time, we were on 2 point...
A little close, if I recall, yeah.
Yes, we needed 7.3 feet. Now we only need 3.3 feet, if I'm correct. You asked us to move the bulkhead, to take that out, to move it over. We could, we found a way to put a new one.
Okay.
So we did that, and there's nothing else that we had to do.
Okay. That's about as far away as you can get it.
Yes, yes. We met with Christopher and the building inspector.
And the plans are roughly the same?
You can have, I have another one if you...
We have a copy? Do we have the amended revised plans?
Yeah, I believe, so I believe those were submitted.
Okay, we have.
Okay.
So what did we go with on the...
So it went from, how far, it was 1.2 feet, I think, before, right?
No, before it was 2.7.
2.7?
Yes.
And now it was 6.9.
Yes, 6.9. And plus, we had a detached garage. Now we put it all together.
Yep. Wait, so the variance was for the...
So the variance was for the detached, which is no longer...
Which is no longer applies.
Is no longer being requested.
So we should withdraw the variance?
So the variance was already withdrawn, so this is a new hearing.
This is just a special term issue. Okay, okay. Okay, and same thing I asked last question. You've been apprised that it has to be used by a family member, you can't, if a family member's not there, you can't rent it, you can't, okay, good enough. And it sunsets with your ownership. Any questions?
I'm all set.
Anyone in attendance wish to be heard on this? There will be no further questions or comments. We'll take it under advisement. You'll be notified of our decision.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our, no, we've got one more. Our final 6:30 hearing is to hear the appeal of Raymond Valloy.
Valloy.
Okay. Little mall tonight, almost. 57 Janet Circle, Shrewsbury, Mass. For a special permit to the town of Shrewsbury zoning bylaw under section 4-B to construct an addition on an existing non-conforming property located at 57 Janet Circle in the residence B-1 district. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate 33, plot 0259000. Welcome, please state your name for the record.
I'm Raymond Valloy, I'm the homeowner.
Okay.
I'm actually looking to amend the petition to also include the variance. I was notified, uh, as of the 19th, that I would also need.
Yeah, we can't do that. It needs to be posted and.
Well, I would like to ask for a continuance so that.
Okay, okay, yeah.
Sorry, for, for next month, so that I could, so that we could address both of the petitions.
The same time.
At the same time.
July 29th at 6:30.
Correct.
Can I get a motion, please?
Motion to continue this hearing until July 29th at 6:30.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay.
Run, we can go down 78.
Yeah, yeah, no, he's not coming.
He's not coming.
Yeah, yeah. He's not, he, he just texted me. He's, did not leave work, thinking for whatever reason that he did not realize it was a meeting.
Should we move to continue with that?
Oh, yeah.
Make a motion to. Motion to continue this hearing until a later date?
To a later time and date, sorry.
It has to be, so it has to be July.
July 29th at 6:30.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Let's start at the beginning. Italiani, any?
I have one.
Anyone have an issue? I'm in favor of just letting this go while Shrewsbury, there's been a window there forever. I don't think we need the, a lot of.
It's a little generated.
Yeah, I just let it go, yeah. Okay, anyone have any issues?
No.
Okay. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, anyone opposed? Uh, One Applewood Circle. Questions, comments, concerns?
Well, I think they addressed a lot of our concerns.
Yeah.
I know they don't meet all the setbacks, but they did try to accommodate all our questions we had at the last meeting, so I don't have any problem with it.
Yeah, anyone?
I appreciate all the changes that were made.
Yeah.
Okay, so let's do the special permit first, which is for the in-law apartment. Can I get a motion?
Who to approve the special permit for the in-law apartment?
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And now can I get a motion for the variance to construct an addition? Actually, we need to, it's, it's not 1.2 feet anymore, right?
No, it's 6.
It's 6.8.
So it's, so they're, yeah, so they're, so they're.
So we're modifying.
They're less than what they.
They're less than what they asked for, so it has to be by the plan, right?
Right.
Right, which will be 6.8 feet. Yeah, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Two vote sheets. Uh, 16 Crescent. An addition 6.9 feet from the side property line. Again, I look at this one like a second floor addition. I don't even want to see it, frankly. If we can't, if we can't change the interpretation. Which one's that? Yeah, but. Oh, did I miss it? As I announced, two sheets. Great. Questions, comments, concerns on 16 Crescent?
No.
Yeah, yeah. And this is now, yeah, okay. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Here's 16 Crescent. Uh, next, 278 Prospect Street. Special permit for the in-law and the variance, looking for less than 4 feet of relief from the side, the rear property line. Any questions, comments, concerns?
The only concern I have is when they apply for these petitions, they should show plans of what they want to do. You know, I mean, they can show diagrams.
Yeah.
But they should be show a plan of what this proposed project is gonna be.
Yeah.
And it should be what part of the application. That's all I have.
No, you're right, yeah. Uh, anyone else have any issues, concerns? Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Two vote sheets. This wasn't in, yeah. And it's, yeah, well, I didn't say that, yeah. That was, what was that?
Prospect.
Prospect Street. Next is 250 South Quincyman, which.
Has the plans, all right.
From the source that really didn't root it.
Yeah, or if it does, like I said, if it does, I view this in the same way we view the second floor addition.
Yeah, right, yeah.
I would just, if they're not increasing, they give you a little history. If you were in a pre-existing non-conforming lot, say like, you know, behind this on Gage Lane, where all the lots are pre, they were all built before zoning.
Yep.
So a lot of times people come, they want to put a second floor on. They don't want to approach at all on the setbacks. So it's a special permit because they're not changing anything other than going up. And we tried to get the bylaw changed twice at town meeting, and got shut down both times because it needs 2/3 approval, which is a high hurdle. But as a board, we kind of look at these as, we believe that the building inspector should be able to just issue that permit without us. They're not changing setbacks, and, and so typically we don't even look at, we just by right approve those.
Yep.
And, and I view this, if we, if it does need the special permit, and I'm interpreting that wrong, then I would view this the same way. They're not changing the side, then, that this is not conforming.
Right. So Kristen, the bylaw changed at all?
No, the bylaw didn't change. We did receive a memo by request on certain instances of special permits. And when those are kind of triggered from town council, and so that did.
Yeah.
I don't, it didn't, there was some previous kind of.
Yeah, actually, now that I'm thinking about it, I kind of agree with you that it does need this special permit. Because it is kind of the same as the second floor addition. It doesn't change any of the setbacks. And, and so I, I think my interpretation was initially wrong on that.
It's just that the addition.
Doesn't change, right.
It's controlling everything, and also, I mean.
Right, so just the, the memo that we were referencing was, it looked at the special permit versus variance criteria in more detail. And what we found is that in order to trigger the variance, and this is, obviously, the memo goes into much more detail, but in a broad sense, to trigger the variance, you need to be creating a new non-conformity. So if it's an existing non-conforming.
It's a special permit, yeah.
And it's not creating any new non-conformities, you can still intensify that under a special permit criteria.
Right. Yeah, okay. Did, did, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Big fold. 7 Shady Lane has been continued. 384 Hartford Turnpike has been continued. And that leaves. 57 Janet Circle, which is also continued. So 274 290 South Street, special permit for a takeout window has been unanimously approved. One Applewood Circle, a special permit for the in-law and construction addition, which will be 6.8 feet from the side property line, has been unanimously approved. Hartford Turnpike has been continued. 16 Crescent Streets, to allow addition to be located 6.9 feet from the side property line, has been unanimously approved. Move aside the second one. Which one is this for? Prospect, Prospect. There's two sheets on those. 57 Janet has been continued. 7 Shady Lane has been continued. 250 South Quincyman, special permit to construct an addition on an existing non-conforming single-family dwelling, has been unanimously approved.
Can I just make one statement?
You absolutely can.
In regards to the plans?
Yeah.
I think they should be submitted with the application.
I totally agree.
When they do come for an application, I wish they would just show a plan of what the proposed project is gonna be like.
Yeah. But, but, but again, on the one, are you talking about the South Quincyman one?
I'm talking about all of them.
Yeah, but, but you know, it's, even though they, it's again, like, the second floor additions, you know?
Yeah, right.
You know, so I.
But something that's changing.
Yeah, yeah. 278 Prospect Sheet Street. Special permits and variance have been unanimously approved for a in-law apartment special permit, and a variance seeking 4 feet of relief or 6 feet of relief from it have been unanimously approved. Do we have any old business, new business, or correspondence?
Uh, no.
Okay. Can I get a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?